Today's Board of Commissioners work session this May tenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Today we'll be receiving a presentation regarding our classification and compensation study, which has been put together by Evergreen Solutions. Thank you for being here. I'm going to turn things over to our county manager to introduce today's presenter.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Attorney. Thank you all for being here. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge all of our employees who are here today. Thank you for being here and for those of you who may be watching while working on your computers. This is an important time for us here at Cobb County. As you know, Chairwoman Cupid, this past January, a year ago, at you all's retreat, you and I spoke about when was the last time we had a comp and class study? We kind of saw the train coming at us as we saw attrition, as we began to address our pay and to really pay more attention to our exit interviews from employees to try to get a better understanding as to what's going on here in Cobb. So as a result of the board's request to kind of look at compensation and class, we put out an RFP. The RFP was awarded to Evergreen Solutions. And today we do have Nancy Berkeley here as one of the founding partners of that organization who's going to present information, including the scope of work and all of the things that they've been doing up to this point and including next steps. But what I would like to say to everyone watching is that you have a board of commissioners who's here today to listen and to learn and they hear you, they see you, they understand what's going on nationally, what's going on in the state, what's happening regionally, and more specifically, what's happening here at Cobb County. And so I want to thank the board for listening today. And I want to go ahead and let everyone know that we have four commissioners here. One is listening to us, not feeling the best today. And I also understand that Commissioner Gamble has to step out, but she's going to step out and continue to listen on her way to her next appointment. So Commissioner Gamble, we acknowledge that you may have to leave a little bit early. But on this note, I would like to go ahead and be respectful of people's time and ask Nancy if she would come on up and just walk us through what your methodology was, what your findings are, come on up, and what the next steps will be. Thank you so much for being here, Nancy. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. And good afternoon, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Berkeley with Evergreen Solutions. Just a little reminder, we're based in Tallahassee, Florida. Very excited to be here today conveying that information to you. Certainly we'll be open to questions as well. So go ahead and get started. Today's agenda, I'm going to talk just briefly about our study process, what we call the results from employee outreach. I'll describe that briefly. Current conditions, that's just a snapshot. A look at what you currently have in the way of pay structure and where employees' salaries are within that structure. Compensation review, certainly we did a salary survey, so the results of that survey. Benefits review, benefits were not a focus of the study, wasn't really within the larger scope, if you will, but we were asked to collect a little bit of information, so I have that to share as well. The proposed competitive, I probably should say highly competitive pay plans or very competitive pay plans, maybe is a better word to describe that, and some implementation options available to you. And then again, next steps and additional recommendations. So today, we've completed what we call employee outreach. So this was actually myself and another individual conducting one-on-one interviews with the senior leaders here, agency heads, trying to understand some of the challenges that you might be facing with regard to compensation, classification, benefits, et cetera, kind of get the idea of what, you know, we might be needing to focus on when we went through the study. We, again, assessed conditions of the current pay system. Again, I'll explain that. That's just saying, hey, what do you currently have? What are you administering? What is that design? What are the design of those pay plans that you're administering? And again, where are salaries? Because the study itself, any of these studies, compensation classification studies, are really about, I'm going to say probably, two things at the highest level. The ranges themselves, the pay plans themselves, and whether or not they're competitive. And then obviously individually, employee salaries. But they are looked at, you know, specifically in different ways, so I'll get into that as well. We did what we call and conducted internal equity analysis by asking or making available to employees what we call a job assessment tool. So if they believe that they had a concern about their classification, their title, the scope, and maybe it wasn't properly reflected in the title or their description, if you will, they could complete something we call a job assessment tool. It's effectively like a blank job description. So we had employees do that, and then that was reviewed by supervisor and agency heads. And if it met the criteria, if that does need to be reviewed, it was passed on to us as Evergreen. For any other job, we looked at the current job description. So we assessed all classifications, but we did specifically have a process for those that submitted a JAT. An MIT is a management issues tool. That was another tool that's available. We made available to the supervisors and directors to submit to us. Again, sort of an opportunity for them to tell us very specifically, I have this classification, I think it should be less number of levels, more levels, et cetera, or it's a pay issue. So very directly focused our attention on some areas after we did our analysis to go back and look at those that they submitted. Again, conducted the external equity analysis. That's going out to the market to find out what they're paying, again, what they, the peers, are paying from a salary range standpoint for what we call benchmark classifications. I'll go into that. We developed new, very market-competitive pay plans. We individually slot classifications into those pay plans. And what does that mean? It means we take the data, the market data, that external equity analysis data, results from that, and that internal equity analysis, marry it together using some mathematics to do so, mathematical formulas to do so, and then use that as a guide to slot positions. Why don't we just take the whole pay plan, say, increase it by X percent? That would be maybe okay in some cases, but in some cases, you might not be moving it enough for classification or too much in others that are already at market and don't need that adjustment. So that's an individual slotting of classifications. We developed optional methods for implementing the new proposed plans. So this is specifically how to take current employee salaries and place them in those new plans. This is very much guided by us reviewing with the county, which I'll review again, your compensation philosophy. Your compensation philosophy should always guide what you're doing with regard to the pay plans, what you're doing, in my opinion, in the studies, everything. There is no absolute. It is your organization to define what that pay philosophy is, and then our job is to collect the data and give you the best recommendations that align with that. We also estimated the annualized cost associated with each of those implementation options. What we have remaining is to prepare and provide the draft and final report, provide training to the human resources staff for how to assign pay grades, just like we are doing that slotting now, how to assign or have done, how to assign those pay grades using the same exact methodology. Now, they've been very helpful giving us any data, et cetera. So they're familiar to some degree, but we're going to actually give them the tools and help them in the support of how to do that in the future. Again, I'm going to go on the assumption that you'll implement new plans and then afterwards, two months later, you might have a brand-new position and that would need to be slotted. So this would give them the ability to do that. And we'll always be there for backup guidance if needed. And then we are also going to prepare revised job descriptions as well, as needed. Outreach, this is what we heard from outreach. I say we, it was myself and another consultant, that the county's benefits are appreciated and along with the wellness program, enjoy the paid holidays, vacation, sick leave, value the education program benefits, for example, and training opportunities provided. The opportunities for improvement, pay grades are too low, not competitive and/or inequitable. There's not consistency with regard to merit increases. Again, these are perceptions, okay, that we heard, for performance and the cost of living increases, that the hybrid retirement plan may not be something that exactly motivates people to either come here, candidates, and/or remain with the county, and that you might want to consider lowering the vesting years for retirement. Certainly many, just one quick note, certainly many of these or some of these that is specific to the county are things that we hear every study we go, quite frankly. And of course, certainly a reason why you're conducting this study. Current conditions. So this again is what types of pay plans, by design and type of pay plan, are you administering now? So you have a general open-range plan. Really, you have a full-time and a part-time plan, separate plans really within that. Twenty-nine full-time pay grades, twenty-three part-time pay grades. But it's open range, meaning non-step. There's a minimum, midpoint, and maximum. And those range spreads go from sixty to fifty. That's a little bit different than what we see typically. They go from fifty to sixty, meaning the lower end of the pay scale normally is at the lower percentage and then higher as you move along. Why? Because of the lower ranges typically, typically, employees are in those positions and may have an opportunity to move to another level, so they're moving from pay grade to pay grade. Don't need quite as much room, if you will, in the pay range spread as you do as you move up in those pay grades. So you'll see where we made a little recommendation to change that. I should mention also, fifty to seventy is considered best practice for these types of plans. So still within best practice, just a little different in the design. For the sworn and certified plan, that's the non-step and grade plan for some of the public safety. That's an open-range plan with thirteen pay grades utilized of a larger pay grade, pay scale, which is fine. Again, still saw those same sixty to fifty percent range spreads.
Sorry, can you help me understand the open range versus the grades? I thought open range meant there's no step in there and then... And you said for sworn and certified, are we utilizing both systems or are we using...
No. Sworn and certified plan, in this case, is the non-step and grade plan.
Okay, so the non-certified.
Those positions that are not in step and grade.
Okay, thank you.
And again, so step and grade, step is and grade have a very specified way of progressing through pay plans, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. When I mentioned we reviewed salary progression, and I can't see those charts that far, so I have to look myself. This is the, these are, this is the distribution. We take the range, we take the ranges, and we divide them into quartiles, zero to twenty-five percent, twenty-five to fifty percent. This gives us an idea of how salaries have or have not progressed through a range. I call it left to right through the range. I look at this like almost immediately. It's one of my first things I look at when the analysts prepare this to say, what do we have? What do we have? Is it what I heard in outreach? What's going on here? Is it what it should be based on the county's compensation philosophy? Because I will always tell you that the distribution should be aligned or as closely aligned as you can get it, if you will, with your compensation philosophy.
You've used that term multiple times. In fact, I'm recently hearing of that term, your compensation philosophy. So can you talk about that more?
Yes, I actually have a slide. It's the very next slide. Is that okay? If I go to that in a minute? Absolutely, absolutely. So looking at this, and you see that most of, let's take the general open-range plan quartile analysis, forty-four point nine in the first quartile, twenty-three point five second, et cetera. Bottom line, there's a lot of employees whose salaries are below the fiftieth percentile, which is considered market for a competitive pay plan for most employees as they gain experience and become more proficient in their work. So they would expect, particularly in today's market generally, to move toward that point as they go along. Again, we know that there's things that have happened in the past and et cetera, but that is, in today's world, absolutely much more of a, probably a belief, if you will, or something that, you know, employees are going to hold is, is my salary progressing? Or my salary progression? And how does it progress? Can I progress it, you know, from left to right? In addition to what I call the vertical potential movement as well. So looking at this, my immediate thing is, okay, for the full-time and the part-time, there's some salaries that are clustered, you know, below those midpoints observation. Little different distribution on the sworn and certified. Okay, noted. All right. Go on now to compensation philosophy. So this we reviewed and understood that this is your compensation philosophy for the county. So what we want to know is what market position do you want to be in? This translated means, in the simple terms for me, where do we want to anchor? I call it anchor, your pay plan. More than competitive, a little bit more than competitive, seventieth percentile? We want to put it, we want to take that pay plan when we get that data from the market and anchor it a little bit more than competitive position. You want to have it at the seventieth. So that's what we do. You'll see that, okay? That's a lead, not a top, but that's a lead position in the market. Pay practices that you want to remain or have the ability to continue to have, of course, equitable pay practices, but flexible. Continue to have flexibility in your hiring and practices if you want to give additional salary in a new hire practice. That does occur now, potentially with the ability of taking a look at the internal salaries and with the possibility within fiscal constraints of doing something to help with those internal salaries, you might have more flexibility with that. Again, in today's market, that's what many of your peers are doing. They're having some more flexibility in their pay plan and their practices. So I want to give you the ability, if you will, in how we're designing these to do that. Open range, again, that's going to give you that ability, definitely, in that min, mid, and max to use those flexible pay practices. Again, always with the consideration of internal salaries. And then that your pay increase methods, generally speaking, are across the board and merit increases.
Are there other examples of compensation philosophy?
Other examples? What I would probably say is we...
I mean, I'm asking, are these recommended? Are you saying that this is what we've articulated?
That's what you've, okay, thank you, sorry. This is what you've articulated. I would absolutely concur that they're recommended, if you will. The open-range plan, again, that flexibility, not that you can't do some, have some flexibility in step plans. I don't want it to appear that you can't in some ways as well. Utilize those, again, in different ways. But absolutely, this is what many of your peers are doing, having. Not that they're necessarily picking a seventieth percentile market position, but many are picking a more-than-competitive position, particularly in today's market.
What's a benchmark or most, I have some kind of...
Chairwoman, let me...
Is this retrospective? Is this looking at what we have, looking back? Is this looking at where it's been articulated?
They looked at both. They looked at where we are and asked us, where would you like to be? And so what the seventieth percentile really means is that if we were to hire someone in for a vacant position, we would be bringing that person in at the seventieth percentile, which basically means there are other organizations with whom we bench paying at least thirty percent more, for example, right? So at fiftieth, we would have been right at midpoint. So what we said, we just wanted to lead in the market of hiring people in and also recognizing our existing employee salaries. So what we're trying to say is, where does Cobb want to be? And so we want to position ourselves to be competitive. So to be competitive with Fulton to Cab, Gwinnett, Marietta, Smyrna, and I think we benchmarked against twenty, about twenty other jurisdictions, where does Cobb want to be? And so talking with the team, we said we want to lead. And leading allows us to be at a point where we can be competitive. So the salary ranges that they will be presenting will allow us to be competitive and allow us to have room to not only address the employees who are currently here, but also to attract new employees to be looking at Cobb as a place to work.
Okay.
Does that clarify it a little bit better for you?
In part, it does. I'm trying to understand seventy versus seventy-five versus eighty. Is this a benchmark? Is this a practice? I'm just trying to understand, when you're identifying this philosophy, where this is coming from? Was this a broad consideration? Was this department-led consideration of...
Yes, yes.
And typically, we don't ask the board, we don't set that.
Right.
We're not the ones that are assessing these things in detail for hiring, even though we want to be a competitive county. So I'm just trying to understand.
Right. There are a lot of other jurisdictions that are about fifty to sixty, and we took it up a little bit more, but we also were very concerned about what we could afford to do, what we would be asking the board to consider. And so in talking with Nancy and her team, we felt very comfortable at seventy, at the seventieth percentile to say, we're not, you know, we're not the bottom. We're on the other side of midpoint, and we are very competitive with those salaries. So we may not be at eighty-five or ninety, and I don't know of any jurisdictions that are, but at this percentile, it gives us a really good shot at recruiting and retention.
Okay. And you're comparing just governmental organizations or this is market?
Market.
Okay.
We're looking at market. Now, to be fair, it's very difficult to compare county government with the private sector, but yes, we did look at... Yeah, we looked at certain positions that are competitive for particular departments. So for example, DOT and Water tend to lose people to the private sector. And so when we looked at some of those, this takes into account for some of that. But as you know, it's very difficult because the private sector is also struggling to be competitive as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield, did you have a question? Okay. Any other commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am. I would just add to that, if I may, that, yes, it's not a, this is not, you know, way out there, you know, from what we see. In fact, we see quite a few now go sixty-fifth, sixtieth percentile. And some of that I absolutely believe, and I understand it, is because of the market today. Of course, we're all aware of what that's happening. So, you know, tomorrow, you know, two of your peers could change their pay plans, and all of a sudden, it's like, well, they're paying more in those ranges. Yes, that is happening. So that is probably very, you know, good because it's going to kind of protect you, give you a little bit of protection, if you will, for a little bit, from a little bit of that of what's happening in that market, too.
Thank you.
So the salary survey, mentioned that a few times. So we actually devised a salary survey in which we went out to collect information for, it was actually, I think, started a hundred and fifty benchmark classifications. Benchmark classifications means that we're collecting data from a good cross-section of the classifications within the county. We can't go out and ask peers to complete, like, you know, many hundred of the classifications because they simply probably wouldn't actually respond to us. So this is a method in which, you know, salary surveys are conducted. We want a good cross-section of all classifications across the county, levels, et cetera, where we ask the peers to give us data. We ask them to complete a survey that we specifically identify the minimum qual's, et cetera, and/or give us their pay information so we can make those matches. So we did have, for the peers that you see listed here in bold, data that we obtained from those peers, we made matches. On the average, the matches were at least six point nine matches per classification. That varies. Not all peers have, you know, all of the classifications for which they can give us information. And I would add that we also adjusted this for cost-of-living differences, differential. So when you see a few on here that you're like, well, there's, you know, we're not in Miami-Dade, for example, we adjust that data for cost-of-living differential. So it's comparing here to Cobb County. What we found when we did that, we take all of that data and say, on the average then, where is your current pay plan? And the differential at the minimum is, it's behind nine percent at the midpoint, again, that market point, thirteen percent, and at the maximum, seven point seven percent. Note, again, this doesn't mean that all classifications are ahead or behind. Again, that's why we individually slot, but it does mean overall, pay plans behind. The current market. Okay? For benefits, again, we didn't focus here, but we did collect a little bit of information here. As you'll see, for retirement, peers offer similar retirement offerings, you know, with the most common type of pay plans being pension and deferred compensation. Years to fully vest average from those we collected is five. Employer contribution, average employer contribution being eleven percent. Employee contribution, two point five. We, again, on sick leave, annual and sick leave accrual, average monthly accrual for annual leave, seven point five. Higher rates for those is more tenure, and the monthly accrual for sick leave is about, is seven. Paid holidays, we were asked to just collect a little bit of information there. So the most common amongst peers were nine paid holidays. Some additional holiday offerings were, some offered additional holiday offerings, I'm sorry, although less common. Proposed pay plans. So here we have the general pay plan. And what we did was we observed that the part-time pay plan contained, you know, positions, of course, that were performing the same work that the full-time employees were doing. So we generally always advise to, why not have those be in the same pay plan, be graded the same, et cetera, if they're performing the same work. They should typically be integrated. So we did that here. Came up with a new pay plan that is, again, market-competitive. It's really, again, what I call anchored at the seventieth percentile. Open range, integrated part-time, full-time, twenty-eight pay grades. The range spreads, in this case, from what I verbalized before, fifty-five and then go to sixty-five. The lowest pay grade does start at fifteen dollars an hour. So we incorporated that in the pay plan as well. And then the next one for sworn and certified, again, this is the non-step group of individuals, if you will. Again, designed it similarly, just that at this point, we could start at the sixtieth percentile, given the positions, if you will. Again, anchored it at the seventieth percentile, open range, has twenty-one available pay grades to it. Not, all are utilized currently in the proposed pay plan where the positions are slotted. And again, we're always trying to maintain internal equity, too. That's both within a department or an agency and across the county.
Okay.
Yes, we have a question?
Yes. When you say the sworn and certified that are non-step, is that separate from our current stepping grade?
Yes.
For sworn and police, fire? For sworn and police, fire?
Yes, so the, these are the, yes, these are like police chief, those type, those positions that are not in the stepping grade. All right. Implementation options. Again, going along with understanding a few things, your compensation philosophy, and also where your current salaries are, what are you trying to accomplish, again, within fiscal constraints, certainly with this, with this study? So we developed these options. The first one, which I'll refer to as the purple option here, is what we call bring employees to new minimums. So if you were to implement our proposed pay plans, we would always recommend that you at least get the employee salaries within that, those pay ranges. So there's certainly employees that would need to be brought to the minimum. So that's like a, you know, what we would recommend is at least a first step. It's like, you got to get the pay plans going. That's the first step. The next options, I'm going to describe briefly. They just change a little bit in the detail, if you will. But this gold, the next one, move toward a market three-tier class tenure, and then the latter one, which is really, I'll call it the yellow option, all take into consideration two factors. Again, briefly, one is where the current employee salaries are with relation to the new midpoints. So it's a, it's a, it's a computation, it's a formulaic computation of something called compa ratio, current salary to new midpoints. We determine that, and then we add to that, if you will. They're either a component within tiers, a lookup table that we have, some different tiers, that's why it's called tier, three-tier or increased three-tier, where we say, depending on how long an employee has been either with the county, or in one case here, in their classification, how much, or should, should we try to incrementally move those salaries just a little bit more, I call it, to the right? So we're trying to help alleviate some of that compression we saw in that analysis of current conditions. We're not trying to fix the world. We're trying to make some effort to do that and move them along. Again, because most of those people probably just didn't have the advantage, perhaps, of having some of the increases that maybe in the past years, you know, others could be afforded. So we're trying to, again, move them without leapfrogging people over other people, et cetera. So we came up with a way to mathematically calculate these. So the first one you see there is move toward market three tiers, takes into consideration a tier of, you know, one to three years, three to seven, over seven years, and says, based on that compa ratio and how many years the employee has, let's move them a little bit more towards that midpoint. Not to, toward.
Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to understand the mid versus the maximum. So if someone's here for eight years, we're moving them close to the midpoint. When do you get towards the maximum of that midpoint?
She's going to go through each of these, and she'll show you how that person who's in that eighth year moves toward it.
Okay.
In that last year. So the ones to five, five to 10, and over 10, you will get that eighth year.
Okay.
I think, okay. No, that's fine. So, so yeah, so in that, in that gold option, if you will, again, that's just total tenure, three tiers, seven and more, we're moving them. We literally have developed this table that, that the formula goes to and says, go and look and see how many years and move them a little bit more, or a little bit more, if you will, towards that. The next one, that's the three-tier classification tenure, just looks at total time of classification, not total tenure. We always present that as an option as well, and says, do the same thing, use that same lookup table, and just look at the class, time and classification. The last one there, we increased those, we increased those tier, those tiers, if you will, to make them a little bit larger. So it's one to five, five to 10, and more than 10. So we're moving a little bit, a little bit more. So we, we're trying to give a little bit more of that movement to those employees with increased tenure. In today's, in today's market, your peers, and certainly you are taking, are, have, available to you as well, to utilize multiple methods to increase salaries. And they're using every tool in their toolbox. I'm sure you know that.
Help us, give us some. Let us see what's in the toolbox.
Which means, having a market-competitive pay plan, at least a market-competitive pay plan, maintaining that, I'm going to call it, do good maintenance on that. We'll talk about that more with, you know, HR staff, they'll be doing that for you. And then, to the best of your ability, always continuing to pay attention to that movement or that progression of salaries through that pay plan, because everybody else is doing that. They're going, hey, I'll give you credit for your time there at Cobb, come on over to us, you know, et cetera. So they may have already had the opportunity to increase some of their internal salaries to have more flexibility so they aren't impacting the internal people. So they're doing that. They're doing it through incentives, different career levels. I'll give you a different level if you, you know, you'll get to level four, if whatever. So all of those things are being utilized. Much, I've been with Evergreen for nine years. In the nine, just nine years, if you will, I'm seeing it, everything. They're using every tool that they possibly can. So to the best of your ability, within your philosophy, again, your philosophy, whatever, that, you know, the better able I believe you are to, to try to give those opportunities that you feel appropriate, absolutely, only, then, you know, and maintain a competitive pay plan. Next steps, we certainly recommend, of course, you determine the most appropriate implementation method, of course, considering the fiscal constraints, of course, communicate the results to employees, continue to conduct the pay studies every three to five years. Three years, we recommend at least, if you will, typically doing a pay study that is what I call compensation. Maybe it doesn't need the whole classification piece, if you will, but at least to have, you know, come in and do, okay, let me look at the whole pay plan, do a survey and see if, a salary survey, and see if we need to make some tweaks. Again, we'll work with the HR staff. I know they already do this today, if you will, so, but if they want to maintain that a little bit more, you know, going forward, then, again, at the three-year mark, you may not need as many tweaks. I can't stress that enough. The maintenance in between and the paying attention to the salaries in between is very key. And then continuing to review the pay practices. This is what I was mentioning before, both new hire salary practice, ability so she can recruit people in, but again, paying attention to the internal salaries of people, the pay progression methods, and, and paying attention, again, to that salary progression. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Nancy. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
A question, if we can go back to the previous slide, the one before that, I'm sorry. The first line, bring employees to men, to new minimums. What is your recommendation, or what would be the calculation in setting a new minimum?
What would be the, I'm sorry? Say that again?
Sure. What would be your recommendation on the calculation in setting a new minimum for the salaries, for the employee salaries?
That's in the pay, when we slot, I think I understand this correctly.
I think she's looking at the purple one, right?
Yes.
So what the chairwoman had asked us to do was to look at, what would it take to bring anyone who's under $15 an hour up to $15 an hour?
So will that be the new minimum, is my question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Will $15 be the new minimum?
Right. That's looking at that particular, no, let me just, let me be clear, see the chairwoman go. These are four options. So the chairwoman asked us to look at a couple of things. One, what would, what would it take to bring those employees who were making less than $15 an hour up to $15 an hour, right? So that's what the purple does. We looked at that in addition to, how do we address compression?
Right.
If we were to do that, in part, the second one, and move people to the, to the midpoint. And then number three was move to more market. So you keep layering it. If we look at $15 an hour and address compression, here's what we get. Then you look at the, the red one, and you go, okay, we're going to address $15 an hour, look at compression, but also look at where people are within their classification, right, in tenure. The gold one, well, your yellow, I guess the bottom one, is the one that we are recommending for the board to, to really consider, and that is looking at all three of the, the ones that are above that one, and then look at years and tiers. So one to five years, five to 10, and above 10. So in this particular plan, the very bottom one, it would look at everything that we were asked to look at. It would address those employees, full and part-time, who are making less than 15. It would address the compression for that group. It would also look at how long they've been in a particular class, classification of a position. And then we look at the very last one, which kind of, you know, captures all of that for the most part. Okay. And just as a follow-up, can you just spend a little bit of time on addressing compression and what that is and what that means? Sure. Nancy, I'm sorry. Nancy, I apologize.
Compression is, and it, you can have compression in a couple of different areas, in, okay? It can mean sal, it's basically, of course, everybody looks at it as salaries too close together based on something. It can be actually salaries too close together compressed, like you see in that quartile analysis, clustered together, based on how long they've been there. You could have it, you could have salaries clustered together compression based on performance, not being enough differentiating, differentiation of performance, and you can have compression between employees and supervisors. So we were considering all. What we see is a considerable amount of compression of salaries in the first and second quartile, which in any, if I take all compensation philosophies and throw them all together, you know, I'm going to go, I, I don't think this is exactly what they planned, if you will. That would only be, otherwise, I'd look at that and go, oh, you must have a whole bunch of new employees. No, I don't think so. I think they haven't progressed enough. So there's not enough differentiation based on moving, based on across-the-board increases and performance. So, and I want to mention something, if I may, just to go back for a minute. It, I believe I should say, or we should say, that these options, while we're talking about move toward midpoint, the new midpoints, I should always say that, new midpoints, it's, we certainly aren't suggesting that nothing, you know, ever happened for those beyond the new midpoints. They're just getting paid today at a position in the range that's beyond the new midpoints. So certainly, we would recommend the same thing, the pay progression, continue for them. We're just suggesting that in a compensation classification study, that one area that we see that what is concerning, if you will, is that compression of salaries in that first and second quartile. And that probably needs to be addressed in a study, if you can.
Do you have additional questions, Commissioner?
Just one more out of curiosity. So based on your research, which classification did you find to be the most competitive?
You mean currently the most competitive? I'd actually have to look at my data.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No worries, I was just curious.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I certainly have that data, we have to, of the ones that we collected. I could, I could give that to you, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Commissioner Brolin, do you have any questions?
Well, you're, we're recommending the yellow at the bottom, correct? That category? Okay. My only other question would be, I don't know how to say this. Did you look at where we are now and come to this, these recommendations? Or did we do away with the previous, the last, most recent study that we had done for paying class and build on that? Or did we throw that out and start fresh?
We looked, we did the research of where you are in that, in the, that differential. Slide shows where you are in the market today with the current, your current pay plans. So that's looking today. It's not looking back at anything before, other than, here's where you are now, here's the pay plan you have now.
The Archer's study is a moot point. I mean, about two years after we looked at it, it was already dated, because remember, we didn't even implement the majority of what was recommended in that study. And it was implemented two years after it was done, and the majority of the employees didn't get anything. So they did not go back, Commissioner, and look back at that study. They took a snapshot of where we are today and then went forward with what we said we were trying to, to accomplish with being competitive in the market, and that's the data that they are using.
And, and, and it's what we see in the market for pay ranges. I probably, you know, I didn't get every, I didn't discuss every detail, what's, I mentioned what's best practice. We also look at the pay range data that your peers have, what we know is out there now in design of plans, stepping grade, open range, et cetera. So we took into consideration, really, the status today, and again, your compensation philosophy, what you want to do. So we're, we're in the business, if you will, of collecting the data, doing a very good job of collecting the data, doing the analysis of the data, and then providing to you what is, what you've asked us to provide from a compensation philosophy standpoint. We certainly had discussions about what we see in the market, as I've mentioned. I'm certainly going to give those to you.
And I'd just like to mention, too, that Evergreen Solutions just completed a study for the city of Marietta. Is that right?
Yes.
Would you like to share a little bit about that study? And, and just so you know, their board or their, their council also took the data, but then made a decision to do something even in addition to that. So you all can do that as well, if you want to. But Nancy, would you like to just share a little bit about that particular study with the city of Marietta?
I'll, I'll say it in a more general, in a general term, if that may be the case. Any of our studies that we do, again, we're providing that certainly the organization can determine to do something different, what have you, beyond that. And that hap, that happens in that sometimes we'll provide, again, we're providing, you asked us to do 70th percentile, we're going to do that, we're going to slot at that. If you want to do something beyond that, if you want to do something different than that, if you want to come up with a different implementation option, that's certainly your prerogative to do so. And that happens. That happens with our studies, anybody's studies, even, you know, on a monthly basis or weekly basis sometimes, quite frankly, because that market is moving so quick. We get asked sometimes, well, how come this? They just changed theirs to that. And I'm like, okay, they did, because sometimes, an organization literally says, I'm going to pay X for this position. That does happen. Regardless of what the market says, they've determined they're going to pay more, they're going to pay at this rate, they're going to pay whatever, and they just pick that, that data point. So that's, that's something that happens. So again, we're adding, you know, to, or doing some additional corrections, if you will, if you want to call it that, of trying to achieve something with compression, definitely, or what have you. So I would, I would say it like that, because we do several studies in this area, and that certainly does happen.
Just one more question. On slide number 12, if we could go back, on that next to the last slide, we, we received a number of emails from employees that are very concerned with respect to that next to the last slide. So what would be the recommendation in increasing salaries but ensuring that there's internal equity? If you can just please, and I know that you touched on this throughout your presentation, but if you would, please, for the benefit of the audience, if you can just kind of walk us through that.
Okay. So that, that bullet, particularly slide classifications, to be market-competitive while maintaining internal equity. There's been a lot of work to review what, you know, both what we've done, for us to ask questions about internal equity of positions themselves and where they're slotted. So this goes to that individual slotting. We're looking within the department, we're looking across the county, we're trying to understand, and we had conversations, myself and another individual spent a week here with the agency heads, trying to understand a little bit more about some of those classifications, because we can't possibly read everything in a JT or JD or what have you. So trying to understand that so that they could be slotted appropriately internal. Now, again, when you're balancing, you're still going to take into consideration the market information as well. You don't necessarily go one way or the other, because you might have a lopsided pay plan if you only did market. Public safety is much more. Public safety is much more, very specifically market, that changes much more quickly, so you're a little bit more heavily on the market side. But internal slotting of positions, we've done our best, we'll certainly still work with the county to, to look at that, that those are slotted appropriately. So when somebody says, well, they're doing the same work over here, whatever, if that's really the case, that those positions would have the same classification and be slotted at the same pay range. So that's the slotting of the positions. And then what I mentioned several times again, and you, I think, alluded to this, is the fact of internal salaries themselves. Where then is my internals, where's my individual salary within that pay range? So again, paying attention to that again. All pay practices should always be with consideration of internal salaries. So when you're trying to bring people in at a more competitive position, and they're saying, I'll only come for X, if you have more growth, more salary growth of those internal, internal salaries, then perhaps you'll be able to do that without, you know, they've been there 10 years, you know, and somebody comes in with five years and gets placed ahead of them, that's not going to make many people happy. So it's, it's all of that. So again, it's, it's the pay plan, it's the individual salaries. I hope that answered that question?
Yeah, it did, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell, are you good?
Yeah, I just have a few observations, and I smiled when you talked about the $15 minimum, because when we first started looking at this, that seemed reasonable, and now it doesn't today. I mean, these minimums are going up and looking at what we're paying some of our employees, some below $10 an hour, you know, this is about a 60% jump for some of our base salary employees and so on. I'm grateful for anything we can do to get to the 15, but it just goes to show the volatility or the sharp increases in what that's base standard rate of pay is today, it's just sharply rising. And I, I know we are doing good by increasing that minimum, I just hope we will be competitive by increasing to that minimum, and that we will still have few employees being paid at that base rate. Another observation that I wanted to share, and this may go without saying, but I, I think I need to say it, based off of some of the emails I've received from employees, this is a class and compensation study, not an across-the-board merit increase. So I think I received an email about everybody should be able to get a bump up, and, you know, this board has been very responsive to provide incentives and to provide merit on top of that, recognizing that, that there has been a long period of time where that hasn't been done, and you were, say you to the employees that are here, but our employees were at least deserving of that consideration. But, you know, I presume from the conversations that we've had in the board that this board will continue to provide merit to our employees, but this is not merit. This is trying to make sure we have competitive wages across the market. If we are not paying any of our employees competitively, everyone should see some sort of lift to the 70%, but if some employees are being paid competitively based off of that philosophy that was shared, then there may be less of an increase to others. The, you had a slide that talked about the average of some of the benefits that other organizations are providing. I would like to see what the county is doing comparatively. For instance, I know that our number of years to fully vest is greater than that, is it seven or eight? It's 10, I did that out loud. Okay, so average employer contribution, I don't know what that is, so I'm, I'm happy to see what we're, what's being done by other sectors, I just need to see like a chart comparison, what the county is doing. And, because there may be some things we're competitive in, maybe our paid holidays, maybe. Yes, ma'am. I don't know if we can continue to operate, is Commissioner Richardson joining us virtually?
I'd have to ask staff, I don't think that she is.
So I just need some advisement from the county attorney, because there's no longer-
For a work session where you're not actually voting on a matter, but just hearing it, you can operate with less than a quorum.
Thank you.
Continue the meeting.
Okay, appreciate that.
Chairwoman, to address your, your, your observation, so what we did ask Evergreen to do is to kind of look at some of the things that we are already doing, we would be happy to provide that, but it included things like, you know, several wellness centers here, opportunities to have, I want to say 13 paid holidays. Where we found I think we were lacking the most is employees' inability to level up their investment. So whereas if we, the county puts in 4%, if you put 4%, what we hear from a lot of our employees is that I cannot afford to do-
I understand, yeah.
-all-in at 4%.
Exactly.
But if you would adjust my salary, right, if you give me a little bit more money, perhaps I could do more than 2% or I could, you know, at least get the county's match. So that was, those were some of the things that we were hearing, the holidays, that they were fine, the, the wellness facility, our clinic, all these things that the employees have indicated that they are very appreciative of.
Okay.
What we heard most, more than anything, and I think I see head bounds out, heads bowing out there, is that give me a decent wage and then I can do some of the things that I would like to be able to do, which would be to invest in my future. Some of them also said that 10 years to vest is too long, when you see someone, other organization around us are at five-
Yeah.
...and at seven at the most.
Yeah.
There's a cost to that, and we've asked HR and finance to run the actuaries on what that would look like and when we could possibly do that. Again, it's like turning a barge around in the middle of the ocean to get there.
Okay.
But we have more than 50% of our employees now that are in that hybrid plan, that are with us probably fewer than five years. They come, they stay at most maybe five years, and they leave. So that group of employees is really struggling to find a reason to be loyal to Cobb County. And so what we're trying to do is look at both ends of the spectrum. The recruitment is very important, but the retention is equally important to those who have stayed, those who are loyal, those who have said, in spite of my opportunities other places, I choose to be here at Cobb. And for those employees, we have to look at a way to keep them while looking at ways to attract people to Cobb. And there was a time when the lines were long to come to Cobb. The applications were 200 and 300 to come work here at Cobb. We're struggling now to get really good, qualified people to come work at Cobb. Hence, three, four, five postings for what we would consider positions, for the most part, we never had a hard time filling. So I just want to say I appreciate you listening, I appreciate you are taking this very seriously because the employees, a lot of them are doing two and three assignments that others would be doing, because we can't hire people to do those jobs, and they're saying, I'll do it. I love this county enough to say, I'll do it. So I just want to say we, we're having a problem with both ends of the spectrum.
Thank you, it means a lot to hear you say that, being the county manager, to being responsive to that. I know with all the things we desire to do as a board, we do it through our employees, that's the only way we get it done. And so it, it's important for us to be responsive as well, and I know that somehow tied to this will be the overall financial impact of what this is, and we'll have to take that into consideration soon when our budget is finalized. So, thank you. And again, to our employees, I can't stress enough that I know from the 10 years that I've served on this board, this is the most responsive I've seen us be in, and this is not probably of much consolation when you know the market and you know that you're not being paid competitively, and you know the amount of stress that's in our organization and that you have day to day. We recognize that and we want to do something about that, and I'm hoping that we'll make the right decision come July. And thank you for your patience with us and believing in Cobb and believing in what you do, and there's a commitment at least for me to get this right. Thank you, thank you Nancy for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you Dr. McMorris. With that, our work session is adjourned.